At this time, I'd like to call the Wilmington Board of Selectmen meeting of Monday, January 30th, 2017, to order all members of this board present. At this time, I'd kindly ask that we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, we normally have a transmitting of Treasury warrants. We do not have any this evening. The next item would be the approval of minutes. We do not have any minutes to approve. We are just about on time for a 7:00 appointment with Jeffrey M. Hall, our Town Manager, regarding the presentation of the Town Manager's FY 2018 budget. And for those that are watching at home, I just wanted to acknowledge the audience. I do see a myriad of different people in varying capacities. I do see that we have members of the Finance Committee, we have members of Town Hall Personnel, we also have members of our School Committee, we have our School Committee Chair here, and I do see that we have Paul Roggerio, who is representing the administration for the School Department. Our interim Superintendent Joanne Benton regrets that she is not able to be here this evening. She has the flu. So, on behalf of the Board, I'd like to extend our sincere well wishes to her. And Paul is here in conjunction with representing Joanne, but also for himself. So, at this time, I'd like to get right into the presentation and turn it over to our Town Manager, Jeffrey Hall. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Judith O'Connell, members of the Board of Selectmen, Chairman Teresa Maganelli, and members of the Finance Committee. In accordance with the Town Managers Act, the proposed expenditure plan for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2017, is submitted for your consideration. I would note that an integral part of this document also includes the five-year capital plan, which runs from fiscal year 2018 through 2022. The focus remains on developing a budget which provides each department with adequate resources while, at the same time, ensuring that the expenses don't outpace our ability to pay. The budget continues the longstanding practice of conservative revenue estimates with an eye towards establishing and continuing a rainy day fund that protects residents against significant impacts that may come with the next economic downturn. The second tier of financial planning includes building financial resources to account for the town's long-term financial obligations. While these obligations may not appear to be immediately pressing, it is the town's responsibility to take steps to lessen the burden on future generations to honor the town's long-term commitments. Wilmington continues to see a robust recovery from the financial meltdown that we experienced in the late 2000s. The residential sector particularly has shown an increase in value. As you may recall, from Karen Rassus's presentation back in November, home values have increased from a low back in 2013 of $349,457 for the average home in Wilmington, up to a current value of $423,885. In addition, we're seeing construction in many areas of town, housing construction, Murray Hill also included in there is North Wilmington Estates, the former Garden of Eden property, and property off of Hopkins Street and off of Woburn Street. So collectively, over the next year or two, we'll probably see in the order of about 80 new homes as a result of that construction. Another barometer of the town's economy, and the local economy in general, is the investment that is made in personal property. One of the things we've seen through our new growth numbers is businesses that are investing in their personal property, which is furnishings and equipment, changing out equipment, expanding their equipment. The number that came in for new growth two years ago was over $1 million. The most recent new growth number from personal property was over $889,000. Also, based upon information from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Labor and Workforce Development, Wilmington's unemployment rate is now down to 2.3%. That was as of November of 2016, the last year for which that information is available. You may recall that about a year ago, the unemployment rate was 3.9%. And I would also note that the unemployment rate here in Wilmington is below the state unemployment rate of 2.9%. While these are favorable indicators, there are some perhaps clouds on the horizon, one being the signs that interest rates may be starting to move back up. Certainly, that has implications in a number of areas within the town, one of which would be potential impacts on home sales. The other issue that we need to be mindful of is Textron's notice last fall of their plan to reduce their workforce by 200 people in the spring of this year. Those issues certainly warrant close monitoring as we go forward. In terms of our overall budget, clearly, the cost driver in the budget for fiscal 2018 is employee compensation and benefits. The town's retirement assessment is increasing 9.3%, 9.31%, which equates to $531,142 from the current assessment of a little over $5.7 million. On a positive note, I would add that the town's health insurance is expected to remain level-funded, which is pretty unusual. When you look at the Massachusetts inter-local insurance association's pool of health insurance communities, their insurance rates are increasing anywhere from 4% to 15%. So, the fact that we're able to hold the line, I think, is pretty impressive. I would also note that the various other insurances that the town carries, workers' comp, general liability, property, auto, are actually slated to go down a little over The fiscal year 2018 budget is recommended at $108,914,698. This represents an increase of $5,027,324 from the current budget. However, it is noteworthy that of that amount, $5 million is slated for transfer to various reserve accounts. And I would also note that that's up from last year. You may recall, last year, we transferred $3.5 million to various reserve accounts. So, those reserve accounts, the funds are not slated to be expended immediately. Exclusive of these transfers from the reserve accounts and non-discretionary budget line items, which are primarily the statutory charges, the budget increase is $2,309,576, or an increase of 2.56%. Costs for Wilmington Public Schools are slated to increase by $1,223,921. The cost for the Shawshin Tech Assessment is estimated to go up $225,000. And the cost for municipal general government is slated to go up $981,357. On the revenue front, as has been the case for many, many years, the predominant revenue source for the town of Wilmington is the property tax. And that amount for this coming year is slated to be $79,297,072, or 72.81% of the overall revenue pie. Due to the financial constraints that the Commonwealth has experienced over the last many years, the state aid has not been able to keep pace with the cost of government. And as a result, their share has diminished to some degree, and that has been picked up by an increase in the property tax. Unfortunately, it really does run counter, if you will, to the tenets of Proposition Two and a Half, which was to serve as a relief to some measure on the property tax. That unfortunately has not been the case. It also adds to the burden that struggling families have to make ends meet. The next largest source of local revenue comes from local aid. And that amount this year is projected to be $14,676,600. Governor Charlie Baker spoke at the Mass Municipal Association's Business Meeting back on January 21st, and he, at that point, committed to, in his budget, increasing aid to Chapter 70, which is education aid, by $20 per student, and also pledged to include in his budget $40 million for an increase in unrestricted general government aid. I would say that Governor Baker, throughout his term to this point, has been very supportive of municipal government in terms of his efforts to provide additional aid, and we're very appreciative of that. Unfortunately, I'm not quite so sure that we can expect a great deal of increase in state aid. There was a consensus hearing that was held back on December 5th with the Mass Taxpayers Association or Foundation and various regional economists to essentially take a look at what they would expect state tax revenues to increase by. And the range of increases were anywhere from 2.5% up to about 5.1%. The governor's budget chief met with the Chair of the House and Senate Ways and Means Committees and ultimately agreed on a number of 3.9% increase in state tax revenue, which equates to a little over $27 billion. I would note also, just after that announcement was made, the Department of Revenue announced the first six months of tax revenue had come in at an increase of 2.3%, which clearly is significantly lower than the 3.9% that they're projecting going forward. So, with all that being said, and also given what the Mass Taxpayers Foundation is suggesting is an $800 million structural deficit that the state faces, and the prospect of the Affordable Care Act being significantly altered or perhaps eliminated, which could result in costs coming back to the state, I don't really foresee significant state aid increases. And as a result, we've conservatively increased that by $67,660. Local receipts come in third in terms of the major sources of revenue for the town. We're projecting $11,149,720 in this coming year. Of that, $8,279,000 is projected from the non-sewer receipts. The biggest portion of that money comes from the motor vehicle excise tax, which we're projecting at $4,370,000. Based upon information I've seen, the projections are that the auto industry will hold its own this year, selling just about as many cars in the coming year as was the case this past year. The estimates are that they're going to sell somewhere between $16.8 and $17.5 million vehicles, which is certainly good news for us in terms of collecting on the motor vehicle excise. Beyond that, the remaining fees that make up local receipts range from ambulance fees to alcohol license fees, various other fees, building fees, comes in at about $3.4 million of that remaining local receipts. This budget continues to use long-range goals that have been outlined in previous budgets to serve as a compass for future expenditures. The first goal being the investment in the success of our students and supporting initiatives to provide resources for 21st century education. The town's continued commitment is to direct the necessary financial resources to the School Department to provide teachers and staff with the means to unlock the doors to learning and to foster curiosity and critical thinking. To that end, based upon conversations with the school administration, I'm recommending an increase of $1,223,921, which is a 3.25% increase in the school budget. In addition to that, I'm also recommending an additional $350,500 for capital expenditures for a wide range of areas, but principally involving science, technology, engineering, and math, or the so-called STEM curriculum, which continues to be a very important piece of the education program. One element of that includes the middle school, where the plan is to update computers and software in their STEM labs. The plan is to replace 30 computers and update the software. While there were some minor upgrades in 2004, many of those computers and the associated software are the same units that were originally part of the original school that was built in 2011, I'm sorry, 2001. And that expenditure would equate to $67,500. I'm also recommending funding for replacement of 80 computers that would be in the Woburn Street School, the Shawshin School, the Bautwell School, and the Wildwood School. The current computers are nine years old, and the rule of thumb is that these computers should be switched out every five years or so. That would be a cost of $72,000. As many of you know, the PARC Program, Partnership for Assessment and Readiness for College and Career, has replaced the MCAS as the standard for testing. These tests will now be required electronically, and as a consequence, the request from the School Department is to purchase 189 Chromebook computers for the middle school and the elementary schools to use, at least in part, for that testing program. And that would be a $40,000 expenditure. The School Department also continues with their upgrade to their phone system. This is the second year of that process. They're looking to replace their system with a Voice Over Internet Protocol system, or VoIP, phone system. The plan is to change out some of the cabling at the middle school, which would result in a $50,000 expenditure. Between the operating budget and the capital improvement investment, the School Department will receive $39,219,888 in fiscal year 2018. Going to the next goal, we're continuing to focus on reducing consumption by improving efficiencies in our buildings and vehicle fleet. We were certainly blessed this past year by the milder winter, and that helped to some measure in reducing our energy costs. Also, I would attribute the reduction in cost to the fact that our public building superintendent has been going through a process of changing many of our buildings from number two heating oil over to natural gas. At this point, nine of our buildings have been changed over, and the result of the milder winter and the changeover has resulted in a reduction of 136,000 gallons of fuel, less fuel being used this past year, which saved us $400,000. And he continues to look at different ways to save both on the fuel side as well as the electricity side, looking to change out lighting for more efficient lighting, using occupancy sensors in rooms instead of your typical switches to, again, maximize savings on electric. We are in the process of putting together an invitation for bid on a roofing project at the North Intermediate School. This project is proposed to be $355,000, that is, the budget. There were two projects that were approved in the prior fiscal year, last town meeting. One was to replace a section of the North Intermediate School roof. The other was to replace the roof at the Bautwell. Unfortunately, those projects were not able to be scheduled during the summer of 2016. So, the plan is to group all these projects together in one bid, and if authorization is granted at the town meeting for the $355,000, then those projects would be done this summer. With that roofing work on the north, that would really seal up the building envelope, so to speak, further improving the efficiency of heating and AC in that building. The town also continues to wean itself off of the energy inefficient Crown Victorias. It's noteworthy that in 2015, we had 24 Crown Vics. As of the end of 2016, we're down to 17. Six of those are deemed surplus and will be sold off at auction, and by the end of this budget cycle, we're expecting to take another five of those offline. I'm not sure we're going to be able to get the Chiefs into the smart car, but we're giving it our best shot. Next, in terms of goals, we're looking to continue to work on the technology on the general government side of the equation. The overarching goal here is to improve the town's technology and take steps to build a more secure and robust and scalable environment. It's clear in municipal government that, just as it is in all of our lives, technology is ubiquitous to everything that we do. GIS is used in the engineering department, whether it's looking at projects that are coming in for development and assessing the features of the property to advise the Planning Board and Conservation, looking at where our water turnoffs are so that when there's breaks in water lines, we're able to respond to those quickly. Obviously, all of our administrative staff are using computers, whether it's tablets or desktops, all of those are essential to our ability to continue to operate. There is capital directed to IT that will fund a shared storage environment between the police and the town servers. This is intended to create some redundancy, so if one server goes down, it doesn't completely disable us. Workstations are anticipated to be replaced. Again, the rule of thumb here is that these workstations should be replaced every five years, and our goal is to replace about 15% of our desktops on an annual basis, which equates to about 25 computers. The IT Department continues to work with other departments in terms of their IT needs. A lot of the functions that were historically performed by individual departments have now been taken over by the IT Department. That was the intent, to centralize the IT effort. One area that had not been previously assumed by the IT Department were certain functions within the library. This year, we're looking to replace the audiovisual system at the library. It's in the Bander Room, and one of the challenges that we're having is that because it's an analog device, it doesn't always work well with digital devices, including the Apple TV that's used for some of the children's programming. This AV system would be purchased through the IT Department, and they would assume responsibility for the installation. They're also looking to do some wiring in the library to improve the efficiency of the internet connections. There are a number of people that use the library's computers for access to the internet. Upgrades to software used in the Public Safety Dispatch Communication Center will provide updated methodologies and allow the dispatchers to respond to calls for service effectively and quickly. And this also ties into meshing with the next-gen 9/11 system, which the state is rolling out to towns, including Wilmington. Next on the list of overarching goals is the establishment of a multi-year capital plan. This, as you know now, has been ongoing for the last four years. This is really a critical component of our budgeting process, to be able to lay out for the Finance Committee, for the Board of Selectmen, for the town meeting at large, what we're looking at in the next five years in terms of large-scale projects. And this includes everything from buildings to parks, roads, sidewalks, a variety of issues that involve long-term investments. I thought it would be important to illustrate just the scale of operation that we have in the town and why I believe we continue to put money aside for capital improvements. The town is responsible for maintaining 102 miles of accepted roads, 85.7 miles of sidewalks, 60 acres of parks and public spaces, 29 acres of burial plots within the Wildwood Cemetery, 755,662 square feet of building space, three water tanks with storage capabilities of just over 5 million gallons, 23.2 acres of paved parking at or near-town buildings, 172 miles of water and sewer lines, 73 miles of drainage pipe, 1,242 fire hydrants, 1,239 water main gates, and two water treatment plants that, on average, pump 2.2 million gallons of potable water. On the education front, the town is responsible for assisting with the social, emotional, and educational development of 3,463 students from kindergarten to grade 12. And the expectation clearly is that the school facilities are clean, safe, and accommodating for 21st century learning experience. The current five-year capital plan involves a number of projects. Based upon those projects, the estimated value is $34,809,200. I would say, though, that that does not account for all of the expected costs. As you know, we're going through a facilities master plan. The expectation is that that plan will be finalized in June or July of this year, and we will have estimates from the consultant on other issues that we haven't identified in our capital plan. So, my expectation is that the number will exceed the $34 million. To that end, I would propose that we appropriate $2,441,100 from the tax levy to cover capital for this coming fiscal year. While borrowing is certainly a reasonable tool, and I would suggest in certain instances it's appropriate when you have a long-term asset, I think there's some expectation that future generations who are going to derive a benefit from that asset should pay some of the cost. We still have maintained a very low borrowing rate. Our rate is about 3.5% of operating budget. Many communities who are deemed to be financially strong are in the 6% to 8% category. But with that, we will continue to borrow as we deem appropriate, but, again, setting aside money in our capital stabilization account to try to mitigate some of the need for borrowing. As you may recall, last year, we received authorization to issue a bond anticipation note to cover the cost of the Yentile Farm Recreation Facility and the purchase of a fire pumper. That bond expires in June. The plan is to pursue a second bond anticipation note and combine that with additional borrowing for $714,000, which will pay for the cost of a 12-inch water main, which will run between Glen Road and Federal Street, expand the water line in that area, which will help with water pressure. Also, another critical water line project will extend a 12-inch water main along Ballardvale Street over the overpass at Route 93. This section of water line has been out of commission since 2015, when there was a leak in that pipe, so it's critical that we restore that water service. Next, in terms of goals, developing policies and plans to enhance our financial capabilities. One of the themes throughout this message is the importance of setting money aside for future needs and identifying needs, a means to maximize the value of each tax dollar spent. One of the things that was done recently involving Mike Morris, the town accountant, Denise Casey, the assistant manager, and myself, was to have a conversation with our financial advisor about the prospect of refinancing the school debt. You may recall that the town borrowed $44,190,700 You may recall that the town borrowed $44,190,758 for the school. That is the largest debt issuance in the town's history. One of the terms in that borrowing allows us to refinance once during the course of the borrowing. The life of that debt is through 2037. Based upon the information we received back from our financial advisor, it did not appear that the savings that we would achieve would, while there was some savings involved, it was my judgment that, since we had one shot at this, it would be in the town's best interest to defer and continue to monitor the situation in the expectation that we might get a more favorable refinancing situation at a later time. With regard to the town's policies, one of the policies that we have in effect is a so-called contingent liabilities policy. This recognizes that we have certain liabilities, one of which is the other post-employment benefits. This is, these are largely benefits for health insurance for retired employees. I've talked about this a number of times over the last few years. Clearly, the town, as, and we're no different than any other community, has a sizable liability. The last actuarial study indicated that our liability was $119,436,542. That number is down from prior actuarial assessments, but in my estimation, based upon recent retirements and continued retirements in the near term, that that number is likely to go up. We do have money in this year's budget for another actuarial study. We're required to do these evaluations once every two years. As a consequence, I'm recommending, in this coming budget cycle, that $1 million be added to the OPEB trust fund. That would bring the total amount up to $3.7 million in that account. The other contingent liability we have to be mindful of is the pension liability. Again, this is for the benefits associated with retired municipal employees. These values are recalculated every two years. The pension liability went from 73, a little over $73 million, up to the most recent calculation, which was done in 2000, the end of 2015. The value is at $78,674,503. It's my recommendation, as we have done in the past, to direct $500,000 to the retirement stabilization account. This would increase that balance to $1,759,784. Additionally, I'm proposing that the town transfer $1 million towards advanced payment on that liability. So as you would do with your auto payment or your mortgage payment, if you make advanced payments, it expedites the paydown, so to speak. And if we are able to do this in a consistent manner over time, in my estimation, it will save us money because we're retiring the debt that much earlier. As been pointed out a number of times throughout this presentation, capital improvements are key to keeping our buildings in decent shape, keeping our fleet of vehicles in a place where they're not under constant breakdown. I'm recommending that $3 million be added to the capital stabilization account, which would bring up the total to $6,373,471. When you look at the fact that we have $34 million in capital that we know of in the next five years and likely more, I think it's justified to continue to increase that stabilization account. I would note that just within the last week or so, the Department of Revenue has certified the town's free cash balance as of July 1, 2016, at $18,299,491. This represents a 17.6% increase from the prior year's free cash balance of $15,561,932. The continued improvement in free cash is a consequence of higher-than-expected new growth and other revenues, and also, department heads controlling their budgets so that unexpended funds can be returned to the general fund. I would also note that, again, with the mild winter that we had this past year, we were able to return a significant amount of snow and ice money that was budgeted to the general fund. As a municipal corporation with over $190 million in assets, the maintenance of operating and capital reserves is essential to ensure that the town's business of serving the public continues during periods of economic downturn. We've certainly been in a fortunate situation the last several years in terms of our ability to get out of the Great Recession, but there's no question that there will be another downturn, whether it's a year from now or five years from now. We certainly want to be in a position where we can sustain the services, as we did many years ago, when we drew our free cash down from a little over $9 million to about $3 million. And unlike many communities, we didn't have to lay off teachers or firefighters or police officers. Positions weren't necessarily filled, but we were able to weather the storm. Wilmington's policy of continuing to operate in a manner that earmarks funds to address recognized liabilities and maintain a significant free cash balance is a key factor for our, for rating agencies. Wilmington's AA+ bond rating can be considered the equivalent of the silver medal in Olympic competition, which is an achievement for which the community should take great pride. One step below the highest rating available, this rating places the town in high regard with the financial community and creates an opportunity to borrow money at very favorable I would note, with regard to personnel on the general government side, no additional full or part-time positions are recommended in the fiscal year 2018 budget for general government. Concerns, however, have been expressed by both the fire chief and the police chief about their abilities to continue to meet the demands for service due to increases in call volume and the increase in complexity of those calls. In calendar year 2011, the Fire Department responded to 1,836 calls for medical assistance, while in calendar year 2016, department personnel responded to 2,448 calls for medical assistance. That change represents a 33% increase in call volume, while the complement of firefighters and EMTs has remained unchanged. The largest number of calls to the Fire Department are for medical assistance. A review of the calls for the service days and the days of the week from the period of January 1, 2010, through December 31, 2016, reveals that the highest call volumes occurred during the week, Monday through Friday. During the sample period that was reviewed, the call volume ranged from 2,154 calls on Tuesday up to a high watermark of 2,285 calls on Wednesday, I guess Wednesday being the hump day. So certainly, on the weekends, the call volume did taper off. Saturdays, it was a little over 2,000 calls, and Sunday, 1,809 calls. We also looked at the hours of the day, and it was determined that the largest number of calls came in between the hours of 5:30 a.m. and 7:30 p.m. during these weekdays. The consequence of all this is that during these peak periods, there are increased frequency of instances where the ambulance is dispatched, and before they're able to return to quarters, a second call comes in, and possibly, in some cases, a third call. So we have two ambulances currently with the ability to make two runs, but as you continue to increase the simultaneous calls, it reduces staff in the Fire Department to respond to additional calls, and in many cases, that has resulted in calls for mutual aid. In an effort to address this challenge in responding to multiple overlapping and simultaneous calls, the budget is proposed for an increase of $124,800 towards scheduled overtime. And the plan here would be that two additional firefighter EMTs would be scheduled during the week, Monday to Friday, the hours to be determined, but they would be on for a 10-hour shift within that range that I described previously. We're looking to try this on a six-month basis as a trial run, so to speak, to determine what effect it would have on the ability to handle multiple calls and whether we're able to impact the response time. One of the virtues of taking this approach is that we're not hiring additional staff, so we're avoiding the cost associated, the benefits costs, the OPEB costs. And also, it allows us to test the waters, so to speak, so that if this does not achieve the benefits that we're looking for, we can decide to discontinue this practice, and it will not result in any layoffs or discontinuance of any program. Next, I'd like to talk about animal control. You may recall that the previous animal control officer retired in the fall of 2015. In early 2016, I hired an individual who had been working for a number of years in the dispatch center, and since taking over in early 2016, has been incredibly energetic and committed to this job. One of the indicators of that is that the calls for service has increased by 48% just in the last year, going from 687 calls up to over 1,000 calls. The individual who's assumed that role has been very energized in terms of reuniting stray pets with their owners, enforcing the leash law, working with the Recreation Department to develop a policy for use at the recently opened dog park. So one of the issues, unfortunately, that he's had to deal with is the vehicle that we've provided him with, which is a 2005 Freestyle van. It was really not designed to serve the, in the role of an animal control van. The back portion of the van is, does not have the compartments that you would typically find in an animal control van. It makes storing equipment difficult, animals difficult as well, because there aren't compartments specifically for them. So the proposal is to purchase a van that is specific to the use of an ACO. And this van would have compartments and kennel areas for transport of animals, whether they're being returned to their owners, sent to the hospital, or in the case of animals that are deceased, transporting those as well. It would have a lift capacity, because in some instances, the animal control officer is required to transport very large animals, and certainly, we're looking to avoid injuries. So the plan there is to request $50,000 for an ACO van. Substance abuse continues to be an issue. Wilmington, as it is across the state and across the country, continues to grapple with the problem of substance abuse. The Police Department has been front and center in responding to calls to provide assistance to troubled children and adults, and to respond in conjunction with the Fire Department to medical emergencies. In 2016, the number of known overdoses was 41, as compared to 48 overdoses in 2015. Fortunately, the number of fatalities due to overdose decreased from eight to four. However, that is certainly no consolation to the families and friends of those who died as a result of drug overdoses. You may recall, in 2016, the town meeting authorized $80,000 for the purpose of obtaining treatment services to work with the Police Department and other departments to impact this problem. A request for proposal is in draft form and will be finalized and issued by the end of February to seek qualified counseling services to provide assistance to victims and families. The fiscal year 2018 budget again seeks to support the community to authorize additional, an additional $80,000 to focus on this problem. Many communities, you've probably seen, have hired full-time individuals to work in conjunction with the Police Department and other local government agencies. In my estimation, the first step really should be to contract for those services, that contract service would work with the Police Department in assisting families, triaging victims and families. Through using contract services, we will be better able to focus in on the particular areas that require assistance. And if it's deemed at a point in time that we do need to hire an individual as a staff person, I think we'll be in a better position to know the types of background and qualifications that such a person should have. The expectation is to engage a provider before the end of this current fiscal year, using funds currently appropriated. If additional funds are appropriated at the upcoming town meeting, then those funds would be used to continue the substance abuse services. Next, I'd like to talk about community development. Certainly, this continues to be a priority of mine and the folks that I work with. The real question here is how can local government facilitate opportunities for new businesses and business expansion, while at the same time mitigating the traffic impacts and fostering a safe and enriching place for people to live and raise a family? Achieving that balance is really the challenge. Through the votes of town meeting and efforts of multiple departments, Wilmington can point to many recent accomplishments that enriched the lives of residents. The construction of the new high school and the development of the new campus there, construction of the Yentile Farm Recreation Facility, construction of the dog park, and refurbishing the town park are just a few examples of projects that the town has completed in the last few years that create opportunities for residents of all stages and walks of life to enjoy their time here. Another key element of community development is retaining and attracting commerce. In the real estate market, the proverbial adage is "location, location, location." Wilmington is clearly in a good location, in a great location. Having four exits off of Route 93, easy access to 128 and Interstate 495, and being located just 17 miles north and west of Boston places Wilmington within the science, technology, and telecommunications beltway of the entire region, not to mention the easy access to many of the best hospitals and colleges in the world. For many years, Wilmington has relied on business, the business community, to shoulder a disproportionate share of the tax burden, providing tax relief to homeowners. While the value of residential property makes up approximately 77% of the overall value, and commercial industrial sector makes up 23% of that value, currently, because of the businesses we have in town, they are shouldering just about 40% of the tax burden, and residents are shouldering about 60% of that tax burden. Without that industry and without the Board of Selectment's continued use of the shift policy, the average homeowner in Wilmington would be paying an additional $2,100 in taxes per year. The business of business is important to the town of Wilmington. The foundation of economic development is good zoning. Zoning should set out in an unambiguous manner the uses by right that are desired by the town and the circumstances under which special permits should be required. The Planning and Conservation Department is drafting a zoning article for potential inclusion in the 2017 Annual Town Meeting Warrant that would reclassify research and development uses from general manufacturing category to the light industry category. This will result in R&amp;D uses being allowed by right in industrial districts, the general industry, highway, industrial, light industry, rather than requiring a special permit for that use. The Ballardvale Corridor, as I'm sure many have seen, has become a hub of R&amp;D with easy access to Route 93 and the labor markets of southern New Hampshire and Boston. Encouraging additional R&amp;D use is in the town's, to the town's advantage. Work is currently ongoing to identify much-needed changes to the town's sign regulations. We hear that the sign regulations are often a source We hear that the sign regulations are often a source of frustration for the development community and small businesses, since they are vague in some respects and require consultation with town departments regardless of the size or scale of these signs. So there is work that is ongoing. The Planning Department is working with a consultant, excuse me, to look at ways to make the signed by law less vague and try to accommodate the development community. The Fourth of July Committee, their return to the lead role of sponsor and organizer of the July Fourth Celebration is very good news for the community at large. For the 2016 Celebration, I would like to offer a special hats off to Fire Chief Rick McCullin and Police Chief Mike Bogonis for their dedicated service. And I mean, they did put in an incredible amount of time and effort in developing a plan that was effective in accommodating the carnival and all the events that took place there in an area that is essentially within a residential zone. I would also like to note the personnel from the Public Works Department that worked during that time as well, making sure that the grounds were clean and orderly. And also acknowledge the efforts of Scott Grant and his July Fourth Committee for stepping up and assisting us in working through the logistics of running an event that the town had not been accustomed to. With that in mind, while the town will not be hosting this event this year, I believe it's in the town's best interest to appropriate twenty-five thousand dollars to pay for a portion of the cost of overtime for town personnel to be on scene during the course of that event. In conclusion, the town's financial health remains strong. It is well-positioned to continue to provide the level of services that Wilmington, puts Wilmington in a desirable place as a community to live and work. The budget continues to provide the funds necessary to deliver the day-to-day services to the residents and business community while at the same time ensuring that funds remain available to pay for the future improvements to town facilities and meet long-term liabilities. The successful execution of this plan is contingent upon the work of many hands. Wilmington has a cadre of dedicated public servants, including teachers and nurses, equipment operators and groundskeepers, custodians and librarians, police officers and firefighters, administrative staff and department heads who are invested in providing quality services. I've worked in local government for over thirty years. My desire to work in government came about as a result of two incredibly talented and passionate public schoolteachers. For me, the opportunity to work in local government has been and continues to be an honor and a privilege. While there will always be areas in government that can, that we can improve on in terms of the way we operate and interact with the public, government has a legitimate and worthy purpose. Each one of us lives in a community within this commonwealth, which is part of the United States. A core mission of local government, as it is with any government, is to serve the common good. Thomas Jefferson said, quote, "The care of human life and happiness and not their destruction is the first and only object of good government," end quote. Fostering social interactions with seniors, responding to medical emergencies, working with families affected by substance abuse and domestic violence, educating our students, and providing safe, potable water are just a few of the ways that the town government in Wilmington takes on the role of, quote, "providing care of human life and happiness," end quote. I welcome the opportunity to discuss this budget proposal and to work with the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee to present a budget that merits adoption at town meeting. Before I close my remarks, I would like to, first of all, reference the dates that we have for meetings with the Finance Committee. At the very end of the document, there is a schedule of dates. They begin tomorrow night, in fact. With the Finance Committee will be doing an overview. IT will be looking at their budget. Then on Thursday, Planning and Conservation Building Inspector and Board of Health. These meetings can continue throughout the month of February and wrap up in the beginning of March. And as you know, the combined joint meeting between the Finance Committee and the Planning Board will be held on March 21st. I do also want to acknowledge the folks that were involved in preparation of this document. You know, this is a tremendous effort that takes place. It really starts in October when the instructions go out for developing the capital improvement plan. Departments are required to get that information back to me by beginning of November. That information gets reviewed. The real point person on that, developing that capital document in consultation with me is Mike Morris. And then from there, it really just continues on, meetings with departments, meetings with the school administration. It is, it's a marathon, and it takes a fair amount of energy to get through it. But I want to acknowledge all the various folks that have had some role in allowing me to get to this point this evening. Certainly, my staff, Beverly Dalton, you know, certainly has the institutional knowledge and really keeps me on track in terms of schedule, knows the schedule back and forward in terms of the very beginning of this process to the very end. I appreciate her efforts. Wendy Martinello in our office, who's the purchasing and personnel person, she's involved in this effort as well as keeping us on target in terms of all of our bids that go out and dealing with personnel matters. Jackie LaVerdi, one of our newer staff, she is really a, for anybody who has met her, there is never a time when she doesn't have a smile on her face. And when you call the town hall, there isn't a person that I would want more to be the official greeter. She has a positive personality, and it really is contagious. She does a lot with our technology in terms of keeping the sign board up to date. When we do issue tweets, she's the Twitter person and a number of other things throughout the course of the day. The other person I also want to clearly acknowledge is Denise Casey, my earth-wild assistant here, who's in charge of the slides. She came into this, December 5th was her first day, so we were already into the process with the budget. And obviously, coming from another community, you typically need some time to kind of get your feet settled. She hit the ground running and just because of her talent and perspicacity, was able to pick things up and run with it and really has been a tremendous help to me. Tremendous amount of time and effort that she has put in, after-hours, weekends, you name it. And then I'd like to also talk, to talk about the folks in the Town Accountants Office. Mike Morris, he and I have been doing this gig for about twenty-nine years here in Wilmington, and he is invaluable in terms of his advice, in terms of borrowing and how to structure the budget. As I say, he was the principal person with regard to the capital improvement budget, making sure that that was put together. Lorraine Herman in his office, again, works behind the scenes, but she has been very important to us in terms of the details and making sure that the personnel book was put together, which is one of the supporting documents we have here. And also, one of the newer additions to the Town Accountants Office, soon to be my office, is Kelly Daigle. She is our payroll and benefits coordinator, and she's been involved this year as well in terms of assisting with some of the details. So it is a team effort, and I really extend my heartfelt thanks and appreciation to all those folks. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. First of all, just as the chair, I'd like to personally thank our town manager, Jeffrey Hall, for his presentation. As you can all see from the budget book and the presentation, it is quite a lengthy presentation, and a lot has been done and is involved in getting us to this point this evening. I certainly don't want to be redundant in terms of extending all of those thank-yous, but on behalf of the board, I just want to offer a very sincere thank you to everyone that's here in your various roles. You all know who you are and what you do for the town of Wilmington, as well as those that are not here. We, as a board, certainly appreciate all that you do for the town of Wilmington, whether you're a volunteer or you're a member of our personnel. We consider you part of our overall town team, and for that, we are very grateful. I'm going to give each member of the board an opportunity to speak, and I'm certainly going to allow anyone here this evening, if you'd like to make any sort of comments, you're welcome to do that as well. I'm not going to list you all out by name. I do realize I missed the Assistant Superintendent of Education as well, and I apologize for that. But that being the case, as you can see, we have a full, comprehensive budget that will be coming forward to the Finance Committee and ultimately to town meeting. There's a full suite of services. In my estimation, I think the town of Wilmington remains to be a wonderful place to live, work, and raise a family. We, as a board and as a town, have always remained committed to helping all residents and be a town for all ages, and I believe that there's something in the town of Wilmington for everyone. And it's been my home my whole life, and I love this place, and I know all of you do too. And I think this budget is reflective of a conservative approach for FY18 and beyond that will poise Wilmington to be the great town that it is, and it will be even better into the future. Obviously, any one thing that you can pull out in this budget is important, so I don't want to devalue anything by pointing out some of the highlights, but I think the conservative approach in our capital improvements is key as we work through our facilities master plan and work through that whole process to see what our vision should be like for the next five, ten, fifteen, twenty years, and what the landscape of Wilmington will look like for the future. Certainly, public safety is paramount. Education for our students, having veterans in elderly services, having a full complement of recreation offerings and amenities, and making sure that we handle our infrastructure, I think, is key. Obviously, having smart economic development and making sure that businesses want to come here to the town of Wilmington so that we can realize a productive tax base in that regard, and also just to be a vibrant community, that people want to come here and be a destination that people want to come, visit, and stay. In addition, the substance abuse piece, I think, is absolutely paramount. It's really, really critical. It's something that I'm going to be particularly focused on and tracking because we need, we need to really help out our community in this regard. Coming from the recent conference, and I said it at the last meeting, as a manager and members of this board, often you pick your issues and you pick your focus points. And sometimes, there are topics that pick you, and substance abuse is one of those items that we have to face as a community, as a state, as a country, as a world. So I just wanted to accentuate how pleased I am to see that in this presentation. And I'll just close with this, is that obviously, the available cash amount is a significant number, and that's something that will probably garner a lot of attention. And what I just want to remind people is that if you look at the budget that's proposed, which is just under a hundred and nine million dollars, and you take that available cash, that represents about six months' worth of reserves. So when you think about it, from, economy can be cyclical, what comes up must go down. If you think of the years, when Mike Kier, for example, took over as town manager, the town, it's my understanding, was in a deficit. So we've come so far, and we've been able to weather any economic downturn because of past leadership and current leadership, and making sure that the sale for the town of Wilmington remains strong, upright, and is going to be able to face any headwinds that come our way. So I just wanted to remind people from a fiscal standpoint that this board is very mindful of the tax piece, and that's why we have always, since I've been on this board, done the maximum tax shift classification, which, working with Karen Rashes, we've worked through those numbers, and we've recently done that. So I just wanted to leave you all with a very positive message to say that I believe that Wilmington is in great shape. I certainly take no individual credit for that, but I feel very hopeful and invigorated that in the midst of what's happening at a national level and even at a state level, that the ZIP Code 01887 is in great shape to move forward into the future and beyond. So with that being said, I'd like to turn it over to my fellow board members. I'd like to start to my left, I'll work across the table, and then I'll open it up to anyone sitting here in the audience if you'd like to speak. I would kindly ask that you raise your hand, and I would be glad to recognize you and give you the floor. Okay? So, Mr. Shampoo.
Thank you, Judy. Don't have an awful lot more to say. I appreciate your observations, which was a very good summary. Jeff, thank you for the hard work. I know you work late hours and burn a lot of candles, putting all of this information together and gathering it all from the various department heads. I also want to express greetings and thanks to all the elected officials as well as employees of the town that are here this evening. This is important stuff, and it affects all of us as residents of the town as well as public servants, so thanks for being out here tonight. Just a couple of brief observations. Dee, I don't know if you're able to do this, can you bring back the slide that talks about the free cash and shows it through the years? I forget, I don't know how far back it was, but I think you know which one I'm referring to.
Yeah, so, I don't know if folks at home are able to look at it, but certainly in the room. You'll notice in 2008, you see the curve here, we had a free cash position in '04, and it was depleted as, in conjunction with difficult economic times. And at that time, when other communities who were not as cognizant of and not as focused on making those investments and building up a free cash position, found themselves in 2008 and '09, cutting services and cutting staff and doing things that were very unfortunate. So not only were people finding themselves out of work, but we were also, not we, but those communities, the people that lived in those communities, found themselves not able to avail themselves or receive the level of services that they had come to depend on. That didn't happen here in Wilmington because of the management structure and the general philosophy of maintaining a free cash position or operational reserves. Costs have increased, the size of our government has increased, our free cash position has increased, our OPEB liability has increased. So through the conservative budgeting of our previous town manager and our existing town manager, we're in a position to be able to mitigate the pains of the post-employment benefits that are, that are upon us, that are unavoidable. So thank you, Jeff, for that, and I wanted, I thought that was a worthwhile image to show that if the economy takes another downturn, which we can expect that it will at some point in our future, we are in a position to be able to weather that storm, and that chart will go down again, but we can expect to continue to receive services from our town government, and we can expect to keep our staffing levels, hopefully, at the rates that they need to be. The town is a municipal corporation, and it needs to be run like a business. And Jeff, as our CEO of the business, makes recommendations for the appropriate level of investments so that we can continue to provide those services today and into the future, long-term future. So I'm excited about the facilities master plan and what the result of that master plan will be. I'm excited to start having conversations about how we prioritize which construction and which buildings happen first, and obviously, that will involve the input and feedback of all of, all of the residents, but these documents and this budget certainly puts us on the, on the right path for that. Bear with me for just a moment. Two other last things, efficiency and energy reductions. Those are, I preach that gospel a fair amount as we go through the year and whenever, in fact, we had Redding Municipal Light here just last, last meeting. Any opportunity that we as residents and we in government have to reduce our use of fossil fuels is certainly good for the planet, but it's also good for the pocketbook. So to the extent that we can be more efficient with the facilities, certainly makes sense, even if it means making investments today that will pay dividends in the future. So I'm complimentary of your, your continued focus on that. And the last thing I'll say is that, I concur with my colleague Judy, is this focus on putting in place a measure, well, taking advantage of and using the monies that were allocated at town meeting earlier this year for a substance abuse, family counseling service. My thinking at the time was that it would be a hire, and listening to you, Jeff, and talking about how you believe that the right approach is to contract for those services so that we can get it right, seems prudent, and I'm excited to hear that you have a focus on having that done, that request in place and publicized by the end of February, because, again, each day that we wait to execute that puts people's lives at risk, and so the sooner we can get someone or some service in place, I think dramatically increases or improves the quality of life for those that maybe are struggling with substance abuse. So I commend you for taking that action, and I hope that if there's anything that I can do from where I sit to help spur that along, I certainly offer my services, but thank you for focusing energy on that. I'll leave it at that for now, and I look forward to hearing my colleagues. I'll leave it at that for now, and I look forward to hearing my, my colleagues' input. Thank you.
Thank you. I know a lot has already been said. What can I say? I think in life, two things are certain, death and taxes. Being that said, I really believe the citizens in this community get a great bang for their buck in this town. We have no bus service, we have no fees on transportation for school bus, no trash pickup. We have a lot of, no user fees. So I think that speaks volumes of the community, and I think the town manager's done a good job in putting his budget together. I did give him a call Saturday, and the town manager was here at the town hall, working extra overtime. And as the manager said, I've been on the board many, many years, and I will say this, that this board made the right vote on the tax shift, placing more of a tax burden on the commercial and the businesses opposed to residents. And I served on the board a long time, and most, every single year, I would have to say every year, that's obviously the thing to do. Let me tell you, it's a smart thing to do, but it's the thing to do. And we do that because we have a lot of great businesses in the community that do foot the bill on a lot of things. So I think this town's a great place to live, you know, raising a family. I'd love to see my kids stay in town if possible, and hopefully, we can try to meet that goal, not only for folks that sit up here, but folks in the audience and mostly the residents home. You want your kids really to try to take part, living at home with you folks, you know? So that's a thing that we really need to take a look at and try to overcome. And, you know, once again, the manager's done a great job, and not only the manager, we have a lot of great town employees in this community. We wake up in the morning, the streets are plowed, our first responders, our police, our fire department, they're there when they want, when you need them. They do a great job plowing. I mean, I've gone into Barrika, Burlington, Tewksbury. Nobody does a better job plowing than the town of Wilmington. And I remember Bob Palmer did a great job running the ODPW, and Mike Woods does a fantastic job in doing it. So these are the employees that work here for the town, under the leadership of the town manager. And I got to say, Jeff, I think you're doing a good job. You've always taken the conservative approach, and you're right, I do agree, as the chairperson said, everyone, all the money in free cash, you need to keep that for a rainy day. You never know when you're going to need that money. And the chairman, the person hit the nail on the head. That's only about, what, six months of the budget? You know, so everything's cyclical, excuse me, everything is cyclical, and, you know, we might have great days the next couple of years, and then we can have another 2007, 2008, and years before. So I just want to say thanks to the manager and his staff. Everybody does a fantastic job. And Mike, I've been with you a long time, you do a great job as our accountant. Thank you.
Thank you. To my right, please.
I just, I, I would agree with my colleagues as to what they said. I won't talk too long, other than to congratulate you, Jeff, and your staff, working as a team. My compliments to you in putting everything together with your department heads, the school committee, Superintendent Benton and everybody. I look forward to going through the Finance Committee process over the next couple of weeks. Some of the key comments or key aspects that I pointed out was the conservative projections that you have, the, the budget increase, the limited budget increase of only 2.56%. The increase to the school budget, which was, which was good of 3.25%. And I'd like to say that it's a positive, having that free cash in the stabilization fund with the, the capital improvements that are on its way and, and coming forward. I would like to see the, how that, with the fire department, how the overtime increase compares to hiring two firefighters, to see what, if it makes sense to, just to hire the firefighters rather than to add more overtime to the budget. But other than that, I, it, I'm just going to read through it and ask questions along the way. But congratulations on a good budget presentation.
Thank you.
Mr. Bendel.
Thank you. And I don't want to be too redundant here, but a few observations, and I do have one quick question, if it's appropriate. First of all, thank you to your team, Jeff. Appreciate your conservative approach and all the hard work you put into creating this presentation, and it's obviously a very thorough, well-thought-out document for us, and I look forward to, looking for, looking through it in its entirety. Just a couple of observations that I made. I think it's a positive that we're going to, you mentioned at the very beginning that the town health insurance is staying level. I see that as a, a big positive. Again, a conservative approach with spending, only 2.56, is, I think, is much appreciated by the residents. I too am pleased to see that Governor Baker has increased in Chapter 70 funding, which is a positive for our schools. I think it's, it's too bad we won't see more of an increase in local aid. In terms of your goals, I noted that I too believe that it's a real big positive for the town to see 3.25% increase in the school budget and the investments in STEM and STEM Labs, which I think is great for our students. And obviously, the school system is one of the reasons why Wilmington is such a great place to live. And then also, I really appreciate the creative approach to increasing the response time to residents who are in need of medical services. I'm looking forward to seeing how that plays out. And then lastly, I do have one question, if I may. Just on page seven, you mentioned that the authorizing an additional $80,000 for substance abuse, is that an additional 80, making it 160, or just another $80,000 next year?
It was, so it would be $80,000 for this fiscal year. So appropriated in current, in the '17 was 80, so it would be 80 again in fiscal '18.
Oh, thank you. And the reason I ask, I just, I see, I see increases in almost everything except for that, and I would, it's too bad. I think that some make, make the argument that certainly, we can all agree, it's a, it's important to have all that money in free cash, but I would imagine that some would argue that some residents who are struggling with opiate addiction are facing very rainy days right now. And so I think it'll be difficult for some to, to grasp at that. But again, those are just some of my observations, and I appreciate all you've done here. Thank you.
Thank you. So the board has concluded comments. I'd like to turn it over to the audience. Would anyone like to make a public comment this evening regarding the manager's budget? Yes?
Paul Regiro, Record of Most Major in Finance. I'd just like to personally thank Jeff and his staff for the collaboration and the support that he and they provide to the Wilmington Public Schools. We really appreciate it, and the school system's in great shape, and we really appreciate the support from the town.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none. Okay, I'll bring the comments relative to the budget to a close. Communications, we do not have anything this evening. For that, any public comments at this time? Hearing none. And I'll move on to new business. And I will offer that to my colleagues, and I will start to my right, to Mr. Bendel.
I'm also, thank you.
Okay? Anything over here, Mr. McCoy?
No, go.
Okay? Mr. Shampoo.
Yeah, no, I'll refrain from making comments at this time, because I think I know what Mr. McCoy is about to say, so I'll, I'll leave it to Mr. McCoy.
Okay. Mr. McCoy.
All right. I'd appreciate it. I need to correct a fact that I incorrectly stated in a town crier interview. I said that there was Mercer in the groundwater, but I was wrong. That carcinogen that is, that is actually in the water, was I was going to talk about, was hexavalent chromium. Hexavalent chromium is a carcinogen that forms with, forms from welding hot metals. It is one of the toxins found in the groundwater at Olin. I'm very passionate about this very important issue that our town has faced since the early 2000s. I'm sorry for, I'm sorry for any confusion I may have caused along, obviously, MDNA is another huge carcinogen that's in the water. So there was nothing wrong on the reporter's side. I said something inaccurate on the information that I had, and I'm sorry for that. And I would hope to think that people would see that. That's all. And I just want to correct it. I was wrong.
Okay. Thank you for that. And I, as the chair, do not have anything further as well. And at this time, I'll move over to important dates, please.
Important dates. The Finance Committee begins their meetings tomorrow, January 31st, Town Hall here at Room 9. They'll be going over a general budget review, information technology, revenue, general government. Also, on February, I would just note, well, it's not specifically listed here, February 1st is the date for the hearing, public hearing for the 25% design of the North Boston, New Boston Street Bridge. That will be at Woburn City Hall at 7:00 PM. February 2nd, Finance Committee meeting again here, Room 9, Planning and Conservation, Public Buildings, I'm sorry, Building Inspector and Board of Appeals, Board of Health. Then February 3rd is the last day to submit petition warrant articles for inclusion on this coming town meeting for April 29th. February 7th, another Finance Committee meeting here in Room 9, Department of Public Works and Public Buildings. February 13th is the next Board of Selectmen's meeting. February 16th, another Finance Committee meeting here in Room 9, Police Department, Public Safety, Central Dispatch and Fire. February 21st, another Finance Committee meeting, Veterans Services, Town Clerk and Historical Commission. Finance Committee again on February 23rd, here in Room 9, Shawshin Tech. February 28th, Finance Committee meets at the Wilmington Memorial Library, 7:00 PM, to review Recreation, Library and Elderly Services. And then March 2nd, Finance Committee concludes their series of meetings with the Wilmington Public Schools.
Okay. That completes our important dates. At this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Okay, motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, and good night.